Do you call the things that you tie the horse to? That's what it looks like. Well, I didn't see it finished. I saw it under construction.
Whatever. It's up to you. You can do the bench.
Did you design it?
You can do here. No, this is all available. Pretty cool, huh? Did we find a person who seconded the executive session reentering?
I don't think I did.
Okay, good. Did we put that in? Okay.
Do you recognize a Gene Connolly?
Gene Connolly.
Is it Gene Donnelly, but not Connolly?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, you can call them. See who they are, because the number should be right there. Are you going to also co-host? Let me know when you're ready to start, John.
You think you can sign some vouchers later, Mac?
Or tomorrow morning?
Isn't that pretty?
I heard you got flooded. That's awful. I have a medical marijuana permit. Thanks. Appreciate it, though. Hi, Tinka. All right, now she gets to co-host. Is that correct? So that she can turn her mic on?
Yeah. In order to be able to mute and unmute, they need to be a co-host.
Josh, you're in the waiting room. I like this.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Yep.
You can turn your volume up just a little bit if you want.
That's my assistant. She's safe.
Oh, now we can officially start. Oh, geez, been waiting. Have you recovered? Have you recovered from last week? Oh, gosh. Can you?
Okay, right? I guess Wi-Fi. Yeah, so let me.
So, Mac, there is no link, right? So Josh and I, I just logged in on the public link.
That's fine. And we're going to allow you to co-host. So that you can't, so you can use your mic, but others won't be able to use it in the public. Hi, Josh. Can you co-host Josh so that he can also?
I, I think I'm good.
Okay, did we co-host him? We're taking a little extra precaution tonight.
Thank you.
So I'm going to call the meeting to order, but, you know, I'll pause afterwards. The Board of Trustees Special Meeting, Tuesday, September 21st, 2001, is called to order. It is 7:00. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor McFadden.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw. Trustee Brooke.
Yep.
Trustee Casker.
Here.
Trustee Sharer.
Here.
Okay, so I'm just going to take a minute to talk to my host, John. How are we doing on the meeting in terms of setting things up? Are we ready to roll, or would you like another few minutes? Take your time.
It should be me, but it just says, they've turned off your microphone.
I'm just going to try strong.
There you go. I wish you, I wished to lunch in the city that day that I called. That was just hilarious.
But.
I had a dinner in the city, you know, that called me. I sit down there.
I logged in off the links, but then like if I.
That's the way I guess everybody else. See what's where.
Let me try out the website. Yeah, if I click this, it's a lead meeting, so I assume.
Yeah, I assume you're in, but I just don't see you here. I see everybody else that's co-hosted.
I love oysters. Yeah. Okay, let's see. Somebody is, oh, gosh. How are you guys doing?
So far, so good.
Okay, are we good, John? Okay, great. All right, so first of all, let me apologize again for last week's interruption.
You don't have to apologize. It's not your fault.
That's true. However, it was according, I'll just share some information from the chief, who did contact the DA. And the DA said that, you know, we are required to allow people, you know, access through codes and passwords, because it's a public meeting. And that we're responsible for setting the appropriate features on Zoom to prevent this, which we've done. And that even though it was vulgar, this individual had, or individuals had First Amendment rights. So again, I apologize. What we did was we passed a simple consent agenda. And then two items that were time-sensitive, which I've documented online. And then tabled everything else that was on the agenda until this evening. So with that, I'd like to get started. Now, first on the agenda is approving the minutes from last week. Anybody have any questions about that?
I do. I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
That. The vote of the board, I believe I should not be listed as absent. It was. I don't know, Brian, what the correct, do you say abstain or, or didn't vote instead? Because I was present by phone.
Yeah, we could say something like present, but not counted toward the quorum.
Yeah.
Now, I think, I think that that was addressed.
Actually.
Yeah, it was only addressed at the top of the minutes. And all the separate votes, I'm listed as absent.
Okay, so what would you, what would you like me to put in there instead for Tinka?
Either the, you know, present, not voting.
Okay. I'll do that by hand.
Is that okay, Tinka? Present, not voting?
Yeah, because you explained it above. I just don't want it to be recorded that I was absent, but.
Right, understood. Okay, for the benefit of the trustees, I'm writing present, not voting. After Deputy Mayor Shaw's name on all of the minutes where there were a vote. So if you don't mind doing the same, if you want to have an updated copy, you don't need to. Okay, I've made those corrections. Any further comment?
That's all I have.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes from the September 15th, 2021 meeting. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, please.
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Eyes have it. Anyone against? No. Okay. All right, let's move on. Next on the agenda is a. Quotes for the automatic gate opening system for the main and south gates and the vehicle tags. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
What's the timeline? We approve it tonight and then?
Yeah, so if we approve it tonight, I would say anywhere from four to eight weeks, it could be installed, maybe sooner. And as we discussed last time, it'll give you and the chief an opportunity to figure out a comprehensive plan to share with the board. And we will not, let's just say it came in tomorrow. We have no intention of opening it until we have a plan with what to do with the tags for those in the audience. We are going to have what we're calling passive tags, which are the existing tags. And we're going to have active tags, which are the ones that you tape onto your vehicle, and it automatically opens the gate when you come in the main and south gates. For those on Zoom, trustees, you have any questions about it? Are you all ready to vote?
I am.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one quick question. The funding, this is coming from an allocated surplus?
We have, if, okay, I sent it to you at the last minute. You probably didn't see it. It's coming from the police budget line 1620 dot 25.
I did see that, but that's not funded. Is it? Is there enough to cover? Everything? That's what I'm asking.
Chief, I asked you to. To pick the line, or did you do that?
Please talk about it. And it should, that was a mistake on my part. It should be the police budget line. That's the, the keep line.
The keep.
Right, because I think we just, is that what we discussed, that this is the booth?
Oh, no, that's donated money. That can't be used for this. All right, let's do unallocated surplus. Do we have the information for that? That was, remember that, Chris, we nailed that last time?
Uh, hold on one second. I had that handy.
I know, me too. I can find it if you want.
So. Needs to come from. It's what?
3,000?
Yeah, 3120 dot 22 is the police equipment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking about two different things.
Right. No, we're, we're trying to find the unallocated resources. Unallocated resources that the accountant gave us the number for. I don't believe it's 3,000.
Says unallocated revenues. I'm sorry, unallocated surplus.
So that's an income line, not an expense line. We have to determine the expense line that's going to come off the budget.
Right.
So we need to, the cash is unallocated. We need to transfer it to whatever the expense line is going to be. So that's why.
Correct.
I just want to make sure we're taking, because money's not budgeted in the police equipment line. We need to get it from somewhere. So we're going to take it from unallocated resources, budget it into the 3120 point 22.
Right.
And we're going to do that at a later date. For this resolution, it'll be.
All right, now, do you have the?
3120 dot 22 will be the police equipment line.
3120?
About 22.
Dot 22 for all of them. Okay, now, there's also a change. If you have the resolution in front of you, the cost of the south gate was listed on my documents as 7,450. It's 11,450. I apologize. And for the public, I have handed this to the trustees. This is just a quick down and dirty. The tags cost $10.50 apiece, the active tags. And we believe that reselling them and marking them up will pay for the automatic gate opening. And potentially, and the tags themselves, and potentially a fund dedicated just to security at the gates. And that's to be determined by a plan that's going to be forthcoming from Trustee Casker and the chief. Which will be reviewed by the board and adopted. Okay, any questions before? Anything about the tags? Because that's also included in that.
I just want to clarify something. My, I'm definitely eager to work with the chief on a, on a plan. I'm not necessarily aiming for this to be a neutral.
Hello, this is Josh from the village.
I think taxpayers have some obligation to pay for the security. We do that with the police force, and I want people to buy the tags, not, I don't want the village to profit off the tags. That's my going in. If the board disagrees, then, you know, we'll obviously work that out.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think it's for a future discussion.
Yeah.
But I do think that, you know, if we don't charge, the taxpayer is still paying. Because it's unallocated.
I'm not saying not charge. I'm saying we don't need to charge so much that nobody buys it, and it doesn't pay for it either.
We can discuss that when you present your plan. I do have a different opinion, obviously.
Right. I just want to clarify, because you spoke for us, and I want to, I don't necessarily share that with you.
Okay, no problem. Actually, I said, I'm speaking to the public, because I've already distributed this to the trustees.
Yeah, you said that I was going to come up with a plan that makes it profitable, basically.
No, I didn't say profitable. I said you're going to come up with a plan. Yeah, and I'm not, just to clear the record, I'm not trying to put words in Chris's mouth that we're going to make a profit, and that his plan is going to reflect that. Okay? Everyone good there? Okay.
It may be revenue negative, or it may be revenue.
That's correct.
Depending on how many tags get bought.
That's correct.
Person decides that they have a house which has seven cars and they buy seven tags. That's a, you know, profitable thing. If a person has no cars, whatever it is.
Yeah.
We're fine. Why don't we keep going?
Yep, agreed. All right, so. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the three quotes from Secure Tech related to a new automatic gate opening system for the main and south gates and for the purchase of vehicle tags. The cost for the main gate is $8,820. To be appropriated from the police budget line 3120 point 22. The cost of the south gate is $11,450 to be appropriated from the police budget line 3120 dot 22. The cost for the vehicle tags is $23,000 to be appropriated from police budget line 3120 dot 22. You have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, yeah, all right, eyes have it. Any, any nays? No. Okay, thank you very much. All right. By the way, that's great, huh? Automatic gate opener? What do you guys think? We like it. Okay, um, before I move on. Sir.
Why does the south gate so much more expensive than the?
Because it has a kiosk. And that kiosk is going to allow for a variety of functions, including. You signing on through an application and saying that a guest is arriving. And that person's information and name, and then they'll be able to come through, touch a kiosk, and come in through the south gate. But thank you for asking. Yep, and I'll post the, the, excuse me, the proposals are all posted online. If you want to look at them, and I can respond.
I wondered about the south gate in the sense that at least once a month, there's a repair necessary. And I remember asking one of the repairmen one day when he was working, where are you guys from? I think it was Precipity. Is that right? And I thought to myself, unless it's under warranty, that's got to be pretty expensive to bring somebody here. And I think that probably is one of the worst purchases in this, in this village, but it's something to bear in mind.
All right, just, just to be clear, the public, their mics are muted. So out of fairness to the public, I'm going to have to hold future comments until the public comment period? If you don't mind?
I, I do, but that's.
Thank you very much. All right, but before I move on, I'd like to take a quick break. We have a gentleman here that would like to present something, a piece of equipment to us. You're welcome.
My name is Joseph Brennan, and I am the Aflac representative, Aflac Insurance for the Village Municipality Staff. And Mr. Casker. And I've had a.
Thank you.
Very pleasant fourteen-year relationship with the village. I've also worked at school as a substitute teacher years ago. I worked for Town and Country Properties. What I represent, and it's into the Aflac, I've partnered with a company called Valera, which produces active technology. Money for about a half hour, so the whole.
Can you bring it in front, so the people in the. Audience can see it? That's the camera right at the back.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All hard and soft surfaces have been sanitized in this room within one half hour in a 2,000-square-foot space. And reduces SARS-CoV-2, which causes 19, within three minutes airborne from, from turning this on. So within three minutes, the air was sanitized long before you arrived here. Reduces it by 99.96%, which is negligible. It's piercing the shell of the virus, so it can't replicate. And there's also an ionization process here, which clumps together dust and other viruses, things like that, volatile organic compounds. And it makes them dropped, dropped out of your breathing range. There's also a UV light in here, so this is an all-in-one plug-and-play unit. It was developed with NASA for use in the International Space Station. It is currently used there. It's in their Hall of Fame. It's in the whole Canadian healthcare system. It's in major sports arenas, Round Zero Stadium, Cool Dicks. It's in the local place, the very prestigious place they're running audio and audio log tests on this product there as well. And for homes and for businesses. What I'd like to do is, I'm hoping that, I'm asking that the, the board would take a vote as to whether free of charge, you would approve, like a Zoom call. Our executive director for the decision-makers, which would be the board members. I'm assuming, to have a formal presentation from our executive director, maybe a half hour or so. Anybody who couldn't make it, we could have another one, or we could record it and, and give it to them. And we'll find out if you, if you're interested in it, and then if you wanted to move forward, there would also free of charge, a free assessment. And then recommendations to fully protect the structures, the people coming in, and the staff.
Okay, so we can't do a full board presentation without calling a public meeting. But certainly, two trustees can get together. I'll volunteer to do that. I don't think we need a vote. I'll recruit another trustee, and we'll commit to a trading session. Yeah.
Date or so, and then we'll, we'll work it out.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for letting us follow that machine.
You're welcome.
Okay, any of the trustees have any questions for Joseph?
Yeah, is there peer-reviewed article?
Is it a what?
Are there peer-reviewed literature? It's not recommended by CDC.
The tests that we did were C, C, excuse me, FDA-approved military-grade testing environments, you know, independent testing environments. It's, it's, what are you asking? Is the CDC approved?
The question is, are there. See, it's simple, this whole process.
Right.
And they have not approved it. FDA approved it and other stuff.
Yeah, FDA does approve a lot of things. There are a lot of, a lot of other products out there. This is an all-in-one. And it does retail for 1,500 per unit, but the more units somebody buys, then we can work with them on the price. So when, when we have the presentation, my executive director is going to give you more facts on that, and I'll make sure that we address that issue.
Terrific.
Great, thank you.
Terrific.
Shall I plug it back in, Mayor?
Please, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, hi, just one point, totally unrelated, but the mic, where it's positioned, as people are flipping papers. It creates a lot of noise, which just makes it hard for people on the Zoom to hear. So I don't know if we want to just move the mic a little bit, or just be aware of the, the stuff we, you know, papers creates noise.
No flipping papers.
Okay, thanks.
The mics don't move.
All right, now, also, before we move on, we have a, another guest in the audience, Christopher Gao, representing the TAB. Would you like to come forward?
Absolutely, yeah. Continuing where I was rudely interrupted on sleep by invasive species, which you mentioned.
Can we do the full back? Oh, you got it.
Wanted to talk about terrestrial invasive species, just quickly. This one here, this beautiful thing, you see the, the red fairy and the fairy branch? This is sumac. As kids, you probably had poison sumac. Don't worry. Poison sumac is in the south wet, wet areas. We don't have it in this area in the Northeast. So all sumac you see like this is good, fantastic. So this is native. This is fantastic. So that's one thing less to worry about.
Thank you.
Sumac. The look-alike is this one. Now, this one here, you see it has the same type of leaves. This, this is one leaf, this here. This is one leaf.
Wow.
These are leaflets. Quite beautiful. These are the samaras. These are the seeds. Now, this one is called the Tree of Heaven. God knows why, because it's an invasive species and it's bad. This is the tree that grows in Brooklyn, that book that was written. It grows everywhere and anywhere, foundations. And so it's invasive, crowds out all the native species, all the good things. So it's a bad offering. It's even worse now, because it's the host for spotted lanternfly. I don't know whether you read about that in New York Times last Sunday. Spotted lanternfly has been introduced back from, from China in the last four years. And it is devastating the agriculture industry, the, the vineyards and crops. So there's a real economic impact. That's what the problem with invasive species are. It's not just because they're not pretty or anything. It's because of this economic impact or the impact on human health. Now, the way you can distinguish this one from the other one, if you grab the little leaf that I gave everyone, scrunch it, smell it. What do you smell? Scrunch it. You got to break it. Can you smell peanut butter?
No, nope.
No, but we will stipulate that we smell peanut butter, for the record.
There's a very slight peanut butter smell. So this, so this is the Tree of Heaven. The one that is more appropriately named is the Devil's Walking Stick. This one is in full, you see it everywhere now. This is because of this beautiful blossoming, this sort of purple haze with the berries. Again, this is one leaf. Which is so beautiful. It's double compound. It's, and it's, you know, it's a branch, then a branch, and a branch. It's prickly. And the problem with this is that it, it spreads like the other one, crowds out the natives. And to get rid of it, you think, well, let's just chop it down. No. At the south, near the south gate, there's an abandoned house that's for sale now. It was clear, the garden was clear, but it's so great. There were two or three of these trees. Now there's a whole forest, because the, the roots, the rhizomes go about 10 feet, 20 feet in a direction. And once you cut it, it goes mad and spreads up in other places. So this, this is the Devil's Walking Stick. That's a bad one. The worst one is. Terrible. This one. This one's roots go 20 feet underground horizontally, 10 feet down into your foundations. If you have a house in England, in the UK, you cannot get a mortgage if you have this in your garden. This is Japanese knotweed. And so you have this, you can, the distinctive feature is, is, is what it looks like now with a flowering. So it's this fleecy flowering, and you see it by the side of highways, because when they cut it, the machinery that cuts it will, will cut it. And the same thing, it propagates from a cut stem, from a cut root. So from one plant, when it's cut, it just carries on, right? You have miles and miles and miles. The same thing, to get rid of it, if you, if you cut it, throw it in your compost heap, it'll spread. So the, so the way to deal with these invasives is to go onto our website, tptreboard.org, POMO section, and it'll show you how to, how to deal with these, with these invasives. Also, LH Prism, Low Hudson Prism, the Prevention of Regional Invasive Species Management dot org. They have a lot of information about those as well, about invasives, how to deal with it. But it's, prevention is better than the cure. So it's the same with, for example, this one here. This is. Mile a minute. So it has this triangular leaf. It has a leaf in the middle that's round, and the stem goes through it. It has these beautiful little berries that like, almost like porcelain colored. And so this one is from the racetrack. This one, every week, I, I grab, I pull out mechanically to get rid of it. I've been away for a couple of weeks and it's spreading. If I hadn't dealt with it, the whole racetrack would be covered with this. This is like kudso that Dale Jenkins mentioned. It's like the vine that makes the sand, it spreads, spreads, spreads. That's the problem with the invasive species. They have no predator that stops it. So the point of all this is that we want to prevent the spread of it. So the tree advisory board are very happy to visit your property. And, and point to you if you have invasive species. So we have to do that. And then also, it's all about repeal and replace. So if you, if you get rid of the invasives, for example, like you've got rid of Japanese barberry. Well, you can't just get rid of it unless you replace it. So outside here, we have in the, in the village office garden, we have a beautiful purply-colored plant, which is like the Japanese barberry, called nine barb. You'll see it, well, not that dark, but next time you come. Nine barb, it's out there. Winter berry. Alice Gabbra, inkberry is there as well. So these are great native replacements for invasive species.
Thank you, Christopher. That's really fantastic, and we appreciate you volunteering to, to visit people's homes and, and give them advice as to what they have growing and how to replace it. Repeal it and replace it if necessary. Thank you very much.
Gmail dot com.
Tptreboard@gmail.com. Thank you. I didn't put your email up on the, on the website, because people scan it and take your personal emails. So they'll be able to find it. All right, I'm going to open up the floor to public comments. And to those of you who have joined us by Zoom. And to those of you who have joined us by Zoom, uh, in order to, uh, be heard, please use the raise your hand icon.
Yeah. So computers, you can click on raise hand. If you're on an iPhone, um, or other device, there should be three dots in the bottom corner. When you tap on your screen, if you click on that, you'll see a raise hand option. Uh, if you wish to speak, you click on raise hand.
And obviously we're having to resort to this because of what happened last week. So we apologize, but we can avoid those incidents. Anybody, uh, raising their hand?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Oh, uh, did Claudia raise his hand?
Yeah.
Yes?
No, he doesn't have his hand raised. No. I, I raised my hand just to test it, but like that, that was not.
Okay. So everything's good? No raised hands?
No raised hands as of yet. Maybe if you want to move on and give it a couple of minutes in case.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, I'm going to take, uh, the village attorney Brian's advice. Uh, I'm going to continue with the agenda, but if you have something you'd like to ask, uh, then I'll be interrupted. All right. So let's move on. Um, the chief, uh, submitted a request for upgrading the camera systems at the main and south gate. Um, and we got a series of proposals and have chosen the ones that we are recommending to the board. The old cameras are with analog versus, uh, these are HD.
Yeah.
Zoom capability, different things like that. And I, I have, I can attest to this, but I've heard from the, the police that these cameras are in dire need of upgrade. So does any, do any of the trustees have a question?
Mayor, just for a moment, I, I see we have one, somebody that called in. So if somebody's on the phone, you have to press star nine to raise your hand if you do want to speak.
Star nine. Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to read this resolution and call the vote. And then if that person's still there, we can do it. So, uh, be it resolved that the board of trustees approved three quotes for upgrading, uh, excuse me. Okay. There is only, there are only two quotes. Uh, so scratch that. Yeah, no problem. Be it resolved that the board of trustees approved the two quotes for upgrading the security cameras at the main gate, keep and south gate. And the cost of the main gate at the keep is $4,300 to be appropriated from the police budget line. Are we going to have the same issue here with the budget line?
Three one two oh point two two.
Continuing, uh, budget line three one two zero point two two. Uh, the cost for the south gate is 4,000 to be appropriated from the police budget line three one two zero, uh, dot two two. May I have a second?
Second.
Pause. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any against? Eyes have it. Okay. Do we have anyone that wanted to comment?
No hands are raised.
Okay. No hands are raised. Um, all right. So let's move along. Um, next on the agenda is a vendor, uh, called Payserve. In conjunction with, uh, two trustees and Elizabeth, we received a presentation on the, uh, on this product and we're very much in favor of it. Uh, Elizabeth is very much in favor of it in terms of the efficiency it will result in. Uh, it also has a time component to it, uh, time approval component, which we like. And, uh, so it's strongly recommended from, uh, the staff and two trustees. Did you? Uh, trustee Caster and trustee, uh, um, Shaw both recommend it. So that said, do we have any discussion or questions? All right.
I just, uh, just a little discussion. It's, the cost of it is about the same as the system that we have now, which is very inefficient. So for the same price, we're going to get a lot more efficiency.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I have one question. Can you remotely approve budgets on this? What we're saying, if you have no idea.
Budgets or payroll?
Payroll.
Payroll. Not payroll and all the expenses.
Expenses.
Expenses we, we sign.
No.
This is just, this is just payroll.
Just payroll. Okay. Just payroll.
It's a timekeeping system and a manager's approval system to basically approve time cards. And once Elizabeth gets really professional at it, it will help even, uh, decipher somebody's work for the water department or DPW and help us keep track of that.
I'm in favor. Let's start.
Okay, good. All right. So I'll read that. Uh, be it resolved that the board of trustees approved the proposal for a new village payroll system from Payserve in the amount of approximately $6,750, uh, for the first year and paid for from the general fund line item sixteen seventy dot four. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, why is it approximate?
Um, because the, um, the, all the numbers that we, so Pacer gave us, um, cost per employee. And this is based on 35 employees. So, and I think Elizabeth said, or John, do we have 37 or? So it's, it's based, that, that's the difference is.
Understood. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Eyes have it. Any noes? All right. Anyone now looking to call in?
No hands are raised.
Okay. Um, signage, um, for the front gate, what I want to do is I need to put in here, subject to bar approval. Uh, does anyone have any questions about the, um, or a discussion about the sign?
Eric, can you just clarify? I think in an email you said that it was basically the same as the previous sign.
Yes, correct.
When was that previous sign removed?
Oh, is it the same as the previous sign? No, I never saw that. No, sorry. Um, when would, does anyone recall when the last sign was in the upfront? I think it was before the booth was torn down. Anybody remember?
I can look up a date, but it doesn't come to mind right now. It was, it was an oval sign. Um, said Tuxedo Park on it with a little graphic.
And I think it said, um, something like private roads at the bottom.
Okay.
And then that was cut off after the law case. And so it just sort of said tuxedo park.
It goes back 15 years ago.
Okay. All right. So way before my time. I've never seen a sign there.
Right. Right. Okay. That's right. And, and just so that everyone understands, one of the side benefits in addition to having an appropriate sign identifying the village is that we might be able to cut back on some of the, um, summer traffic to the Renaissance fair. Um, as, as it stands now, literally we're still getting 50 plus people a weekend day. And they, they say, what do you, you know, it looks like the Renaissance buildings, the entrance to our village. Um, in fact, Saturday, uh, I was driving around the park and I saw two people dressed up in full costume, uh, near clubhouse road. They had taken an Uber in. Um, they were too advised at the booth to turn around and leave, but they took an Uber in. I, I picked them up and I drove them to the train station. So there you go. All right. Now, uh, uh, in the folks in attendance, um, the sign design is posted on the village website. And, uh, I'm going to add subject to bar approval, um, for that sign if we approve it. Do any of the trustees have a question? Okay. Be it resolved that the board of trustees approved the proposal from Hudson Valley Sign Studio, Inc. For the design, manufacture and installation of the new village identification sign to be placed at the main gate in front of the keep. The cost for the services is $3,245 to be appropriated from the general fund line one six two zero dot two two, subject to bar approval. Uh, may I have a second?
Okay.
Cool. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any, any against? Eyes have it. All right. No one's looking to make comments? Okay. Okay. Um, I'd like to have a discussion on swimming with or without lifeguards at the WeWah. Um, for the public, uh, what the board knows for sure is that, uh, any swimming, requires a department of health permit. And the current health permit from the WeWah Beach Club has expired. And, uh, when, and that also along with it, lifeguards are required. My goals I shared with the trustees is to, uh, not have lifeguards and do a swim at your own risk. Now, that's only possible under certain circumstances. And, um, there are exemptions given to the, uh, by the health department, um, at a variety of levels. Now, I don't know, uh, Brian, if you had a chance to speak with anybody? Okay. Brian, uh, I've asked Brian to contact the health department and look into any exemptions. The pros of not having lifeguards are many, including expenses and opening longer hours. Those are the two, I think, primary. So, um, I was wondering if the board would like me to continue to pursue that strategy.
Concern of principal liabilities, right?
Correct. I did speak to the insurance company.
Right. So if.
And we're good.
If, uh, lifeguards are there when the WeWah Beach Club is operating, we fulfill that requirement. And all other times, it can say swimming is prohibited.
That's true.
Right?
Yes.
That's all. If I'm not mistaken, that's all we have to, we don't have to go through any approval with the, whatever. As we're just saying, you know, you can use the park for barbecue, whatever you want. That's why. But swimming is prohibited unless it's during WeWah Beach Club hours. And that resolves our problem.
Yes, except that, um, there are people interested in swimming now during the season. And on their behalf, I'm inquiring.
But if we're saying you can swim at your own risk, that's basically what you're saying.
Yes, except that, um, well, I actually, this is a good time to have Brian step in and explain the different issues.
Yeah. So I think to, to that point, if, that's really the question, you know, if, if the board's looking to have swimming at your own risk outside of WeWah Beach Club hours, that's something that would probably require a variance in a department of health, assuming you have a permit for a bathing beach. If, as you suggested, it's going to be, you swim when the club is open and outside of that, there's no swimming, then you don't need to do anything because that's already what's provided. You would have a sign that says, no swimming when lifeguards are not on duty. So, and I'm not saying we can necessarily get a variance if you wanted to say swim at your own risk under these circumstances, but that's what I think. And as I sort of suggested to the board previously, you need to decide what you want. And then we'll see if we can get you there. If you want people to be allowed to swim, there may be a possibility of allowing a swim at your own risk, but no guarantee. You know, that there is a provision for getting variances from the state regulations. I don't know if they would allow that variance. If you're going to keep this as a beach, you would need the department of health permit and their regulations currently say that if there's not a lifeguard there, you would need to have a sign that says no swimming. So we'd be looking, uh, to get a variance from that if the board wants to allow swimming at your own risk. And so that's kind of.
Brian, can I just ask a question about that? So what you're saying is if you have a sign that says no swimming and you make that obvious and clear, then if someone does go swimming and is injured, that's, that's on them. If we don't have the sign and someone goes swimming and gets injured, that's on the village. Is that the right way to be looking at this?
Yeah. I mean, I think if you're going to leave it as a beach, yes, you need to have a sign one way or the other. I think if you have no sign, then, you know, you're more likely to have, uh, risk to the village of liability.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
I believe that, uh, there is some precedent for getting a waiver. And that would be, uh, that you can currently swim in pond three if you're a resident of pond three, uh, year round without a lifeguard and at your own risk. And if you, uh, own property on the WeWah, you can swim in the WeWah right now, uh, at your own risk. So what I would hope to ask the department of health is based on that, is there a reason why, uh, we need lifeguards for people that would like to swim, that do not own property on the WeWah? And I see a hand. Sally Sonny?
Yeah. Just before we go to Sally, let me say that the distinction here is that the bathing beach, if you have a beach, you know, which requires department of health permit, that's where all these regulations come in. If you're just a lake and you don't have a beach, then these issues are not raised and there's no requirement to have the no swimming while lifeguards are not on duty. You're just a lake, you know, like, like anywhere else. You don't have to regulate that. It's really the beach that raises those issues because that's what's regulated is the bathing beach under state regulations. Um, so do you want, uh, to allow Sally to speak at this point?
You guys, okay. Sally, yeah.
So, uh, Sally, if you can hear me, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. You just have to respond to that and you should be able to speak.
Oh, is it unmuted?
Yes. Aye.
No, I, I just would like to say that swimming in the WeWah at this time is one of the most wonderful things in Tuxedo Park. I've lived here a long time and this is a game changer. It is fantastic. And a few of us, very few, are swimming now. We wear these, um, they're called balloons or buoys. You, you, you hook it around your waist and it's, they're bright colored and you don't feel them when you swim. And you swim out in the lake where, into the middle of the lake and the water is fantastic. And it is the most wonderful experience. We like going from the beach because it's, it's convenient and we can park there. I do understand that there are places along that aren't on the beach where we would have to find another way. But I, I really hope that this will become something that we can do at our own risk. We, we aren't risking, we're, we're very careful and we, we are swimmers. And I don't think anyone would swim there who isn't a swimmer. And we've taken this, actually, I think it should be almost required to have one of these. Oh, am I still there?
Yes.
Everything disappeared.
We're letting everyone know you were speaking, Sally.
Oh, that, um, that, to have one of these, these devices, they're really cheap. Get them at Amazon and it is a game changer. It is wonderful. The best thing I've done in tuxedo parking all this time I've been here. So I just want to share that and I hope you'll do everything you can to make this possible. I, there aren't many people who want to go. The, the water's getting a little colder. I actually bought a wet suit because I want to do it for a long time and it's just great. So, you know, it's, it's nice to have things in Tuxedo Park that people can enjoy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you Sally. Thank you Sally. You're welcome.
Yep.
All right. So, uh, any other comments from the trustees about, uh, hold on one second. Sir, just identify yourself, please, for the camera.
Sure. It's, uh, Jay Rajkada that live at, uh, 121 Laurel. And, uh, swimming at risk, not at risk. Swimming alone in cold water is definitely at risk. So where's something. Swimming alone in cold water is definitely at risk. So wear something bright so we can find you in the spring. But a couple of important things. It's very unclear right now what the rules are. There is a sign that says no swimming without lifeguard.
Correct.
Very clear. There are people who are swimming. There is the use of the park by village residents and their guests, which is always allowed, except when we've been through that discussion before, which is fine. But there aren't many rules about what is and is not permitted at the park. For example, are dogs allowed to run free at the park, and who's supposed to clean up after them? And who's policing up all the cigarette butts? And all of the other things that go along with a public space, we don't want to wind up in a tragedy of the commons situation where everything goes to hell because everyone's sure that that guy's supposed to take care of it. So it would be useful, especially while this process is in flux, if we could have some guidance from the trustees and the mayor as to what is and is not proper.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I can tell you what, what is in the public domain now. And that is that it's open from sunrise to sunset, and that it's the same takeaway garbage issue, and that the noise ordinances are in effect. And also that we, we don't have a leash lock. And you're supposed to clean up after your dog. As you know, the entrance to the, to the park has a dispenser for a dog excrement, so that you can pick it up. But in terms of rules, we certainly can discuss that and consider a variety of things such as signage and so forth. I have been there myself and had a barbecue. It was fantastic. I did not see any issues, but the DPW has been instructed to clean the lavatories. And we stocked the lavatories with our own toilet paper, sanitizer, hand sanitizer, soap, and paper towels. And so, and the lavatory is open, obviously, now. The electricity is in the name of the village, the account, so we don't have to worry about that being shut off. And the DPW will be responsible for closing it up for the winter, the lavatory. So right now, I don't see any urgent matters that would cause destruction or harm to the park. But I take to what you say to heart, and you know, we'll, we'll definitely look into that.
Maybe the best thing to do is to have a single sign at the front that says, you know, swimming only when lifeguard's on duty. Right? Pick up after yourself, leave it as you found it. You know, pick up after your dog, whatever, just a set of rules at the entrance of the park, one sign, and we're done.
Yeah.
I don't think-
Remind people how to be good neighbors.
Right, but at this point, you know, the best way to remind is people using it, see people, and give them grief if they don't do it properly. Just for purposes of, of liability and stuff, we post a sign, that's what it says. We get, you know, our village attorney to approve it, and we approve that sign, and it's the single sign up that has the rules of the, of the Beach Club.
Yeah, I support that. Any comments from the other trustees?
That's a good idea. I saw Josh making a move to unmute, so I don't want to start talking. Yeah, I think it's, it's appropriate to have it very clearly spelled out what, what the rules are. I don't think we need to go crazy with the rules, but just cover what's important. You know, cigarette butts on the ground is littering. The, I mean, the police could cite for it if appropriate. I mean, that's a little ridiculous, but, but, you know, if it became a problem, you know, we might want to. We don't want to go into the water and have a rain, right? So anyway. And as far as the, the swimming, I, you know, I, you know, I appreciated Sally's comments. Obviously, there's some joy to be had in swimming in the nice lake. Yes, Jay, I understand it can be dangerous, but all the property owners are doing it the same way. And there's nothing we would or could do to stop them from swimming in the water on their property. Yeah, that adults be adults. I just want to make sure that we're following the Department of Health regulations, whatever the regulations are, and I don't think that moving the sand, so we don't have a beach anymore, is necessarily, I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze in that respect. So if there's some variances or something we could do-
I don't, I don't think we have to do anything. We're basically posting a sign.
Yeah.
I mean, there's historical precedent, and you say, you know, clean up after yourself, leave it as you found it, or better than you found it. No swimming with a lifeguard, done.
Okay, so I think we're ready to move on.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your input. Alright, so we have a situation where there was a DPW vehicle that was- Oh, okay, I'll, I'll get back to that. Yeah, I'll get back to that. I asked the chief for an accident report, which I received, and the trustees have seen there's a differential between what was paid and what was unpaid. And the resident Edwin Cromie is asking for the village to make up that differential of $711.02. So is there any question or discussion that the trustees would like to have?
I think we do it and put behind us. Is there a disagreement?
No, I think, I think that, and it will come out of the DPW budget. And if the, if the DPW supervisor would like to pursue that directly with the employee, that's up to the DPW supervisor, I would think. Alright, so-
That's right.
Yeah.
One other thing, yes, let's finish the discussion of the WeWah. I think the right thing to do is, I'd like draft of the wording of what that sign will be for the trustees that we can approve, and then we're done.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so be it resolved that the Board of Trustees agrees to reimburse resident Edwin Cromie for damages claimed from a vehicle accident with the DPW vehicle driven by a DPW employee totaling $711.02 to be appropriated from the DPW budget line 5011 dot four. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Eyes have it. Okay, next, we have a resignation from an officer, Louis Roman. The chief has asked us to accept that. He's moving on for personal reasons. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the resignation of Officer Louis Roman. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
As a practical matter, if we didn't accept his resignation, like, what is, what is, what happens?
I, I can address that. Our recommendation is always that any resignation be accepted by the board, and the reason is that if someone submits a resignation, and sometimes there may be reasons not in this case, that, you know, somebody was, was given an option to resign for other reasons. If they withdraw that resignation before the board accepts it as an appointing authority, then they can do that, even if you say, we agreed you were going to resign. As long as the appointing authority hasn't accepted it, the person can now withdraw their resignation, and sometimes that can create problems. This particular individual has nothing to do with that. But as a practical matter, we always recommend the appointing authority accept the resignation so that you don't run into that situation because it's not final until you accept it.
Thank you, Brian.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Eyes have it. Alright. Now, we're on to the, yes, we're, I believe we're discussing Brian's request to pass a resolution authorizing him to extend the MOA, is that correct?
Yeah, this is on the whole annexation and parcel four and something that's been going on for a while, and we still have to schedule a joint hearing with the town of Tuxedo on the annexation petition for the parcels that were to come into the village regarding Michael Bruno. So this has been kind of dragged on, but there was an MOU, and we've extended it a couple of times. Not any fault of Mr. Bruno's that between the town and the village, we haven't been able to get a joint public hearing date. So I am going to work with the town to see if we can just schedule that prior to one of their town board meetings, have it at their location, and move that process forward. So I spoke to Mr. Ellsworth, who's attorney for Mr. Bruno. He's on board. They previously extended it, so this is just so that we're not in the realm of the unknown if there's no MOU because all of this process had been agreed to back in 2015 or 16. So this is just an extension to hopefully the last one so that we can get the annexation done. And the annexation ties into the acceptance of the issues with the roadway that runs along one of the parcels that Mr. Bruno now owns, which is outside the village but adjoining the village boundary. So part of this deal was that he would annex that property. He inherited Tuxedo Farms' obligation to do so back when they owned it. So that's the reason for the extension. Doesn't require any action. There's, there's nothing occurring right now as a result of doing that, but we hope to schedule that joint public hearing and move the annexation process forward.
Thank you, Brian. One of the questions I know that, that the trustees have been wondering is, and myself, is if we decided not to sell the road, the paper road, is that possible? Are they separate? Or has the road already been sold? Can the trustees intervene without intervening in the annexation of the property?
You know, I have to look at the specifics of the agreement, but I think that the, that portion of the road has not been transferred yet. The final portion, there, there were two sections of what I'll call, you know, I think it was called Brook Farm Road. The, the lower portion is the one that it butts this parcel, and it could not be transferred until annexation occurred. I don't recall if it's mandatory. I can provide you an answer with that. You know, I have to look at the agreement to see if, if it was suggested that it had to be done, or it was at his option to, you know, take over that portion of the road.
Okay, so if we were to pass this resolution, giving you the option to extend it, would that in any way prejudice a vote by the trustees not just transfer the paper road?
Yes, there's, if there's a question of that, then, you know, I, I would suggest holding off on the extension because I'd rather give you that answer. If, if, you know, in other words, if we say the agreement's expired, but, you know, there might also be risk there because then the obligation to annex the property and everything else goes out as well. In other words, all the obligations will be on if the agreement's not extended. So, you know, I can review that, but I, I'd be hesitant to say, you know, if you extend it, there wouldn't be any prejudice on, on the transfer of that portion of the road.
Let me, let me just go around the table to, to the trustees. Do you understand where I'm going, where I'm coming from? And, and if so, I, I say we table it until we hear from Brian further. I know that there's people that believe that we should not sell that paper road.
Right.
And I don't want to move forward in a way that prejudges us against voting against selling that paper road. And Brian is suggesting that he can get back to us with some further clarification.
Yeah, I, I may be able to do that tonight. I mean, if you want, I don't know how much more you have, you know, but I can-
I, I am, we're done. You know, I guess one thing we could do is approve my signing it based on, you know, our, a, a attorney-client privilege meeting in the near future. We could do that, if, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, you could approve it subject to, no, well, actually, I should say authorizing you to sign it subject to approval in a final form, you know, by our office and, you know, confirming the issue. Because obviously, the village board members want to know the answer to that question. So, you know, you could authorize it subject to an attorney-client privilege session, in which I would advise you whether or not, you know, that, that parcel, because if the board doesn't, you know, wish to do it in the event that, that transfer is mandatory, then the agreement wouldn't be extended, and pretty much all of the terms of that agreement would go away essentially, including the obligation.
I, I support that. Do, do I have support from the trustees to do?
There's, there's no risk in tabling this for a short-
No, because right now, we haven't extended it anyway, so, you know, right now, it's, it's really out of the extension because we were supposed to do that a while back, and it's, it's not extended currently. This was kind of regent current.
No, we appreciate it.
Yeah, so I mean, if, you know, you want the ability, or we can send the agreement out so you can see the terms and say, do we want to extend this, but-
Right. I, I'd like to go that route. Tinket, do you have any comment?
I know, I agree with that.
Okay, Brian, why don't, why don't you produce the resolution, I'll adopt it, and call a vote?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is a resolution would be to authorize the mayor to execute the extension of the MOA with Michael Bruno, subject to an attorney-client privilege session and confirmation that the portion of parcel four, Brook Farm Road, does not have to be transferred under the agreement if it's executed.
Adopt it. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Eyes have it. Okay, I'd like to double-check with the trustees. Is there anything else on the agenda?
Audit of claims.
Audit of claims, okay. Do you have a resolution for that? I'll ask Brian, actually. When we, if I'm going to sign the audit of claims, do we, does that require a resolution?
Usually, the board approves when we-
Right, this, this is a summary of the, by summary of the, so the answer is no.
Yeah, I mean, again, the board approves the claims.
Yes, we do, and this is a summary. Okay, so this is summary of the MO-
Well, yeah, I would just short-circuit and probably fasten the discussion, so I'm doing so. If you want to just say the, you know, motion to authorize you to sign the audit of claims.
Okay, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized the mayor to sign the audit of claims general fund three hundred twenty-two thousand sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Water fund, nine thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, and professional fees, three thousand seven hundred eight dollars and ninety cents. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Eyes have it. Okay, so unless there's any other items on the agenda, I'm gonna go into executive session, yes?
Based upon the resolutions we have about Secure Tech, perhaps we should authorize a budget transfer from the unallocated surplus to the three-one-two-oh-point-two-two to cover those expenses.
It's fine.
I'm with you with that.
Would you like to read it, and I'll adopt it?
Be it resolved that the board authorized the transfer of funds in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars, that's for all of them, from unallocated surplus line three thousand to police budget line three-one-two-oh-point-two-two.
Adopted. May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Okay, so I'm going to go into executive session. Unless there's something else on the agenda that we would like to add. Okay. Yeah, I will. Yep, yep. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees temporarily leave the public meeting to go into executive session to discuss possible litigation and the employment of a particular person. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So to the public, we will be coming back into public meeting, and if there's any resolutions at that time, you're welcome to join us. Otherwise, we're going to go into a breakout room. Thank you very much for attending. If you're deciding to leave, we appreciate it. Thank you very much for attending, if you're deciding to leave, we appreciate it.
Give me twenty seconds of your time before you enter session. You know, the. You're having trouble getting love from Howarders minions to set up a joint meeting.
Right.
Feel free to reach out to me directly.
Okay, great, appreciate that, yeah, I'm gonna try again, but.
It falls off the radar.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you, though.
Can you set up, can you do the breakout room from there since you're probably.
I don't think we have the option, that's what I'm saying, like normally I would see that, I don't see like. Get rid of the participants for a second. Like normally it would be down. Or normally. Participants. But I don't see anywhere. You know, unless it's turned off on the main.
No, I didn't do anything with the break. Hit, hit the arrow next to share screen. No, just the panel.
Correct.
Then hit participants, no, no, don't.
Yeah, I just have invite.
Yes.
And if I go participants, I either get the, you know, this window. And usually it's like somewhere down here.
Alright, I have unmuted.
Put people in the waiting room, you know, we could do, we could put everybody in the waiting room other than the trustee.
Alright, so.
Mayor, what we're gonna do is, we don't see the breakout room option, so we're just gonna place the people on the meeting back in the waiting room other than.
Oh, perfect, okay, so just to update, rather than us going into a breakout room, we're gonna send everyone back to a waiting room. Which accomplishes the same goal, thank you very much while we do that, thank you for your patience. Nope.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. A six pack.
This way we can just admit them all back.
Yeah, chief, six pack, just dropped one off at my house.
You got it.
Thank you, Benjamin.
Thank you, Ford.
Thank you very much, I look forward to the presentation. Yeah, just, yeah, absolutely, give Elizabeth as your info, right? Yeah, I'll give you, I'll, we'll do something tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you for letting us use the machine. It's pretty cool. It's also the Village Justice Court.
Now, I'll put the meeting room in the waiting room.
Brian, why'd you put the meeting room into the waiting room?
We still have, we're missing Josh.
No. You guys are missing.
Yeah, Josh, Brian and I seem to be in one room.
Brian, you, there, there you go.
There we go, okay.
You guys were missing and now you're muted. Brian and meeting room are muted.
Because no one else is here, right? Correct? We're good with that?
I have four participants.
I have the meeting room, you.
You have Brian, yeah, we're good. This works.
Josh.
So everybody can hear us and we're all good, so we're the only ones in the room, everybody else is in the waiting room.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
I got, I got some videos for you. Just kidding.
I'm sure you do. Standby, thanks, John.
John, are we, sorry. I'm not hearing the audio anymore though from like trustee Scher and they don't sound as loud as they were.
Could you speak, Josh?
Hello? How's my audio?
How about Tinket?
She's not there.
She disappeared.
Yeah. I don't have my, oh wait, you know what, that's me, sorry, yep, got it.
Okay, John will be with you in a minute. Alright, so the first order.
Sorry, John, we're not recording, right? I just wanted to make sure, I don't see.
We are, no, we are.
We are recording back on and we're good.
Okay, great, do we have anyone on?
Uh, we do, we have. One, two, Sally still on, about five, five people.
Okay, alright, well, we completed our executive session. And there are no resolutions and therefore we are going to be adjourning the meeting. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adjourn the meeting. It is four minutes until nine, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Hey, good night, everybody.
Night.
Alright, good meeting.